Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you are interested in joining our weekly study session or tournament, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. So this is where we left off. The red team has a two-one to play. Um, this might be an easy play, I don't know. But if you would like to put, you know, in the chat, you could put your nominations for what you want us to vote on. I see Bill Powell suggested ten to seven, and if you wanna vote, you go to slido.com and put in the code one-two-nine-six. And that should be open now. You should be able to cast a vote on Slido. It is ready to accept your vote. See, I see one vote has come in. Could be people are still getting their Slido set up. A lot of, a lot of people do this on a mobile phone. You pull up a mobile phone and you can vote on there. You can see in the choices, I have like a Y and a Z. I just put a placeholder there. Makes it easy for me to put in a new candidate if, um, if there are more people that like that. Okay, we got, uh, we got a few votes in. They're all for ten to seven, so I think we'll just do that play. And if we go back and look at that. So I'm having a computer issues where my, my desktop computer, I think there's a, a power issue with it. And, uh, so I'm still working on my slow laptop, which takes a while for things to, um, analyze in, in my laptop. Anyway, there are the, uh, there's the results from XG. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm still, still getting a few things set up here. Alright. Now the white team, so this is gonna be me and Eric and, um, Richard Batten. Okay, we got a four-two to play. By the way, before we left, it was a cube that happened, so the white team owns the cube. I certainly would like to cover the four-point. That leaves us with sort of an unpalatable four to play. You know, we could do this. That really is pretty inflexible. Richard, you're newly minted on the dream team. What do you think?
Uh, six to two and seven to three.
Six to two, seven to three.
I mean, six to four. I meant six to four.
So this will be more flexibility, but you're putting a checker deeper, so I think that's the trade-off, right?
Well, it's still, you know, bearing on the two-point, so.
Um, I'm not really sure. Eric, what do you think?
I agree, I wanna make that point.
Um, and do you like this play?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it. Seems, seems pretty reasonable. Oh, those two were, uh, were basically tied. Okay, so we're all smart. Very good. Okay, six to five for the, for the white team. You can put in the chat any play that you'd like us to make. I'm gonna set up the Slido for this vote. So wha- whatever play you want us to vote on, put it in the chat. I see thirteen-two. I've also put in ten-five, ten-four, clearing the ten-point. Jacob says the same thing. Okay, so those are both, does seem like the two options, right? Thirteen-two leaves an indirect shot. You're only gonna get hit with, uh, six-four and double fives. Ten-five, ten-four doesn't leave any shots. Clears an outfield point. Okay, the voting is open, and if you wanna unmute yourself to discuss the play, you can go ahead and do that, too.
Ten-four, ten-five.
Ten-four, ten-five. I've got that in there in the Slido. That's an option. I think that's a, that's a worthy play of consideration. We got a few votes in on the Slido now. Only three votes. We need some more votes. Come on, guys. Thirteen in the room, so ten people on the team. We need some more votes on the Slido. Or three votes will determine it. Last call. Okay, I think, uh, well, there's two votes for clearing the ten-point. So I think that's what's gonna happen. Let's see what XG says. Uh, not really very close. So those three hitting numbers, that's a, that's kind of a lot, right? Um, getting hit now would be very bad. And the ten-point does need to get cleared at some point. Okay. Okay, six-two for the, for the white team. And I cannot imagine we're gonna touch those checkers in the back, right?
No, no, we're leaving those where they are.
Yeah, we are definitely leaving them where they are. So, Richard, what would you like to do? Maybe eleven-five? Seven-five?
I think, um, eleven-five and three to one.
Okay, tell me the rationale behind.
Okay, so eleven-five, this gives us two larger numbers to, uh, bear on the two, as opposed to, uh, two smaller numbers, and that's the only reason.
Oh, I see. So if you do this, then it's the ones and the threes that'll cover, but, uh, so let's see, how will we play fours? I guess we would have to dump it from the five-point.
That's another reason to, to play to the seven is to preserve a six in case we don't wanna break our the rule of six next one, and we don't wanna break our anchor.
That sounds like a pretty good explanation. I think I could go along with that, so.
Yeah, I think, I think I meant that, too.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we're gonna make this play then?
My vote.
Okay, let's do it. And oh, again, very close. Okay, sounds fine. Alright, five-three for the red team. Put your nominees in the chat. Any play that you wanna see us consider? Making the two-point. Oh, that seems popular. Yeah, I also put in the Slido. I put in thirteen to five. You know, might wanna consider clearing that point now. Of course, we did see last time, you know, those three shots just probably just as bad now to get hit, right? Okay, you can vote on the Slido. By the way, you should all feel free to unmute yourself to engage in the conversation. Um, I'm just trying to avoid having a bunch of people unmuted at the same time, but there's no restriction on unmuting yourself and saying something and then go back to mute after you're done.
I wanna break now. I don't wanna make a point. I don't wanna make a point behind him. I need to keep those builders.
So you like the builders on the seven-point and the five-point, and so you're ready to come down off the midpoint now, Antoine? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's inflexible and a mistake to make the two-point at this, at this point in the proceedings.
Okay. So the vote is swinging. Now, two votes for third, oh, everybody's switched over to thirteen-five. Antoine, you're very persuasive. Everybody has come along to your, uh, your way of thinking, okay? Here we go. We'll clear the mid. Let's see, let's see what the bot says. Uh-oh. Oh, the bot likes to.
Interesting. That was my play as well, thirteen to five. I so I, I think we need to preserve the builders to attack the three-point if they leave next turn, but they, uh, maybe they don't have to leave because they well, we in this case kept the six, so we don't have to leave, so.
White could punch at some point, too.
Hmm.
Okay, now the white play, five-three. Well, uh, we're still gonna stay, right?
Yes, make the two.
So then we just have to make.
Make the two-point.
Nothing else to it. We just have to hang on. Alright. Uh, oh, trouble in paradise. When you roll double fives in this position, your first reaction is, oh, right, great. But then your second reaction should be, uh-oh, that's trouble. Okay, give me some choices. There's gonna be a lot of choices on this one, I think. Well, maybe not a lot.
Thirteen-eight and three in.
Okay, thirteen-eight and then seven-two, three times. Okay, so I've got that in there.
I agree.
Okay, I opened the Slido with a couple of candidate plays. Okay, we got a couple of votes. Okay, so you got your Slidos up. Cast your votes. Slido.com, put in the code one-two-nine-six, and you can vote. Do your civic duty. Vote early, vote often. Okay, we only got a couple of votes. We're gonna roll with that. Thirteen-eight, seven-two twice. Okay, we got thirteen shots here, all fives and four-one. Which is certainly not enough to cube. We need a lot more shots than that, so we'll, we'll roll them. Alright, good aim. Okay, now we gotta decide on the six. Is there any reason to stay? I can't imagine.
Run away.
Just get out, right? I mean, the board is closed, so that prevents any problems. Eric, you good with that? You know what? Eric's good.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't notice that was muted. Yeah, um, and it, uh, also this play makes it so double sixes are safe for us, so they probably all doubles are.
Okay, good. Alright, let's do that. Um, alright, how about the cube? Do we wanna redouble?
Uh, hmm. Okay, let me think.
Hmm. We're gonna be, we're gonna be massively ahead by the time we get those checkers. And if we play them right, if we get, you know, if we can play them right, uh, I think that, uh,
I've, yeah, I think we cube.
I don't know that we have any market losers right now. We can wait.
Well, we've already lost our market, alright, so the question.
Well, I mean, not market losers, uh, wrong term, wrong term.
Market gainers. Is there a situation where they might have to take the game?
We, we have a very low risk of rolling further, but what do we have to gain by rolling further?
Alright, I'll tell you.
You don't have many gammons. That's the issue. We don't have nothing to gain.
No, we do have something to gain. There's a very slight chance of winning a gammon, and there's no risk to it, not right now. And you don't, you're not committed to the end of the game. You can decide later on, you know what? Now I'm worried. Let's cash this and take the points. But I think this is a very common mistake. A lot of people will double this, and it is actually, this position is very slightly too good. Now, you're not gonna win very many gammons, two or three percent. So you're, you're taking, uh, you're taking no risk for a very tiny chance of winning a gammon. So let, I say we roll the dice and then reassess after we move the checkers. If we get into a position where it starts to look questionable, like we might leave a shot, then we'll just take the points. But we might get lucky and the, and the checkers get put in a position where we can be completely safe and not have to worry about leaving shots.
Are you saying that we keep rolling and once they enter our board, we?
No, we'll, we'll keep rolling until we get to a situation where we have to be concerned about possibly leaving a shot.
I, I played a match yesterday with this exact situation, and, um, and I learned my lesson from previous experience, cuz I, in my old self would have immediately doubled this and just cashed the point.
Right.
But, but Jason speaks the truth here. If we, if you guys do that, it's gonna say it's too good cuz there's still a chance that you could gammon us, and I had this exact situation in a match yesterday, and I actually played on and gammoned the guy.
And it's, and the important thing is that there is no risk right now. There is nothing that we can roll that will leave a shot.
The, the dice rolled right with it. I just rolled right off of a couple doubles and danced a couple, he danced a couple times and I got the gammon. He's got a, you, you know, red has, we have a gap in our board. It's, yeah.
Say we, say we had one double that could leave a shot, would that be enough to not, uh, play too good?
I'd certainly think about it, but in this case, I would say probably not because, um, that's a very low probability event. Not only do we have to roll that particular number, but then they have to hit us.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah. So the chance of losing in that scenario, because they have to hit us afterwards as well, is, uh, is, is still more beneficial to, for us to try to get the two or three percent gammons than, than risk, like we risk less wins, then we win gammons, uh, but.
Now, to be fair, almost certainly what's gonna happen is we're gonna just redouble and take the points. I mean, we have this buried checker on the ace point. That does not help much at all. So, but this is definitely too good, so I think we should roll on.
Fine, let's go.
Okay, let's go.
Alright, five-two. Now, we, we wanna get into a situation where we, uh, we would like to not have to leave shots on big doubles. So what about like this?
No, we would have to leave a shot in double six.
Double sixes don't play.
No, double sixes will be safe. We played fourteen to two and then twelve off.
Oh, yes, because the, yes, the spare will be on the six.
Spare will be on the six, which is why I wanna put the checker on the twelve point, and this gets us, this gives us now the option to continue. Uh, what about double five? Will we be okay?
Uh, yes, so if that, if those are okay, the rest are as well, so.
Okay, and I think this is the play, right?
Yeah.
You know, we're really trying to squeeze one more drop out of a lemon right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, by the way, here, let's, let's, let's look at, well, I'll, I'll pick up the dice and let's go back and look at the cube that I, that I said was too good. Here it is. Very, very slightly too good, right? You, you would not be giving up very much, and look at our gammon chances. It's like two percent. You're just not, you're not getting much out of this.
Yeah, would be interesting to, to see how much things would improve if our spare were on the six instead of the.
Yeah, it'd be like three percent maybe. It's still very low probability. Okay, five and three?
Hmm.
Let's see, if we.
Make the nine point.
If we do this, then double sixes will leave a shot, right?
Uh.
It will.
So, but if we do this, then we leave no shots. It's not pretty, but we get, we get to keep playing this game.
Yeah, it isn't flexible, but is there a problem, though?
There are no problem rolls, because, uh, nothing we roll will leave a shot, and if we do roll something sort of awkward, we can just redouble and take the points.
Yes, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I was playing a, a shoe wet last night, and, uh, uh, we're mostly intermediate players in this game. And, uh, I was trying to convince one of our newer players how you have to watch out for the double sixes.
Yeah, yeah.
And damn if it didn't happen.
I know, right? That the punishment happens and it, and the retribution is swift.
Yes.
The dice got to.
You still have to, you still have to hit, but.
We do, yeah. Okay, uh, this looks pretty straightforward, right? This is nice. Um, won't leave any shots, so we can, we can keep rolling after this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I remember when I was a beginner and I went to the tournament, Brazilian tournament, and one of really, really good player, one of the best in Brazil was always so paranoid about the double six and the double five, like every situation. It was like always looking out for, can double sixes, uh, fuck me over?
Well, isn't, isn't this Tom James, uh, trauma-based backgammon?
I don't know. Yeah, but I, it struck me as odd that it would be so paranoid about such an unlikely event, but maybe it was a too-good situation and I wasn't skilled enough to evaluate that.
Okay, so here, I think we're just gonna pile them up on the three-point. Which gives us the option of continuing this. If we roll double sixes now, maybe we, we'll, you know, have a serious chance. Nothing we roll will leave a shot, right?
Not this role, not this role.
Not this role. Now, we might roll awkwardly, right? We might roll six-one. If we roll six-one, then we'll just take the points by redouble, right?
I am.
Okay, alright, so we'll do this. Alright, let, we'll roll on cuz it's, it's completely safe. Okay.
Excellent.
Bill looks really safe.
Okay, I just wanna see what were our, what are our gammon chances now? Not very good because of the buried checkers, right? We needed to bear them off and we, it didn't matter.
Uh, we are back. Someone's calling me.
That's alright. Richard and I will, will handle this. Do we wanna double this, Richard, or are we still gonna go for the gammon?
Sorry, I was muted. I don't see any reason to do it now.
Just keep rolling?
Yeah, sure.
Alright. Alright, now we'll, now we get to take some checkers off and keep our five-point board, right?
Yep.
Great. Alright, they're out. Okay, the red team is back in business. Um, how do you wanna play your ace? Does it matter?
I'd go four-three.
Okay, Adam, tell us why you like four-three?
Because when we're bearing off, we don't wanna have any empty spots.
Uh-huh, okay, yeah. That could matter down the line, right?
But, and if, well, I mean, we'll get, I think we're gonna get off, but we're not gonna but we're not gonna get gammoned here. So it does, it doesn't matter to make that crossover. I think filling the gap is more important than making the crossover.
Okay, do you have hopes of winning this game?
No.
Why not?
I mean, it, it would just take an amazing amount of luck. You would have to roll probably four doubles in a row, three or four.
Okay, I, I have another reason why you're not gonna win this game.
Cuz you're gonna gammon us, right? I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna cube us, you're gonna.
Yeah, that's why. You, you, you have no hope of winning this game because we're, we're just gonna claim the points.
Right.
So I think actually from that point of view, you, you probably wanna be more concerned about saving the gammon. You have zero hope of winning the game, but there is still a little bit of gammon risk. It's not much.
Right, if it takes us three rolls to get in, and so make the crossover, and that, with that argument, I'd make the crossover.
Okay, uh, the Slido is open. Let's vote.
I certainly wouldn't take very much time and think about it.
No, no, this is not one over the board that I would spend any time thinking about. Um, alright, and let's, let's not dwell on this. We got a few votes for coming out here. Okay, now, uh, Richard and I are going to consider a cube. See, I think we can still roll.
The white team should roll. Um, double, double six or double five, red rolls two-one, white again rolls high.
We're, we're, we're rolling.
We're rolling because three big ones and we're out, and, and we can always cash, even if they roll, uh, double sixes, we're still gonna be able to cash this. So we're, we're gonna roll.
Did, did you show the irrelevance of the one, though?
The, the complete irrelevance? Yeah. The, the one that you should not spend any time at all thinking about. There you go.
Boy, I tell you, it really doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, I want, you want irrelevant. There's an option in XG for one more decimal place. Here you go.
Right, six-five, I was even thinking joking. It makes no difference, really.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so we will roll them. Okay, take a couple off. Alright, and that puts to bed our gammon chances, so we'll take the points now.
Yeah.
It they're not gonna take this, so we won't even put this to a vote. Alright.
Yay.
Alright, good job. Let's carry on to the next game. The score is now getting a little bit more lopsided. Uh, the dream team is up three-nothing in an eleven-point match, so we got a six-two to play. And you can, you can put your nominations in the chat, or you can unmute yourself.
Wait, the, you're not, you're white, right, Jason?
Yeah. You're red. This is your play.
Alright, twenty-four, eighteen, thirteen to eleven.
Okay.
Put that in the chat and smoke, and smoke it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, I got the Slido open with, uh, three reasonable-looking plays. Alright, everybody likes the, uh, the standard split, so let's do it. Okay. It's not really that close, right? That, that split is, is usually a good play to make with a, with a six-two. Okay, five-three to play for the white team. And.
May. Hmm.
Point? Or you guys have some other, you got some other thoughts in mind?
No, not really.
Okay.
Make the point.
Alright.
It's early yet.
Yeah, the point's good, and they're split, so that puts a little bit of pressure on them. You're better in innerboard point. And I'm, I'm sure that's, that's right by quite a bit. Okay, five-four. This one's interesting.
Eighteen, thirteen, twenty-four, twenty.
Okay, uh, tell us a little bit what, why. That's, that's an interesting-looking play. I, I kinda like that, the way that looks.
Um, because we wanna safety the eighteen. We still like having the builder on the eleven.
Yeah.
And if we do get hit on the eleven, we wanna come in on the twen-, if we come in with a five, then we make your.
So you've got that point slotted in case, uh.
In case we get hit.
Right. Okay. Um, any other plays?
And I'll point out, unless you roll doubles, you're probably gonna have to break your eight-point to hit it, so.
Yeah.
Eight-nine as an alternative.
Eighteen-nine, yeah. Okay, the Slido's open. Yeah, you can go ahead and vote. Alright, most of the votes are for this play that.
Jason.
Yeah.
Am I reading this wrong? Oh, okay, good, alright.
Yeah.
I didn't see eighteen, thirteen in here. I saw, I see thirteen, eight.
Oh, did I put that in wrong? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, hang on a second. The, the option is not right. I, I, that was meant to be eighteen to thirteen, so.
There you go.
Yeah. You're all voting for the wrong play.
Not me.
Yeah, A- Adam knew what he wanted. He, this is the play you wanted, right, Adam? I just put it in the Slido wrong.
Yes, that's the play I wanted.
Okay, good, alright, let's do it.
I think they wanted to have the bar.
Yeah, I think so, right? Alright, let's.
Uh, I, 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 could you add one more option or did you already?
I already, I already did it. Sorry. What did you want, what did you wanna consider, Bill?
Nothing, cuz it would have been wrong, but I just wanted to say there was, there was a two-down overly aggressive option of playing.
Yeah, that, that is worth considering, yeah. So eighteen-nine came out on top.
Wow.
I guess, you know, eighteen-thirteen does have the weakness of restacking the midpoint, and the checker on the nine-point is a good spot for a builder.
Yep.
These are tough plays.
But point zero-zero-two is not horrible.
Uh, yeah, but it was.
Five-two, point five-two, sorry.
Five-two, is that sort of a? Five, two, is that sort of a medium sized error, uh, you know, I don't, I don't wanna discount that. Okay, five, one to play and I'm gonna say.
Thirteen, eight, six to five.
I think that's gotta be it, right?
Agreed.
Okay, yeah, we gotta fight for that point, we're behind in the race, we also have a better board, so that pushes us towards an aggressive uh, hitting play, this is a safe versus bold criterion. Uh, I'd be really surprised if this was wrong.
You've fallen right into our trap.
Yeah, I know. Alright, not close at all, right? You have to fight for that good point. Um, Richard Batten is the patron saint of the five point, so he knows all about.
I, I, I am.
Yeah. Okay. Six, two to play, sorry for your awkward roll, but that's backgammon.
Could you just roll again, Jason?
I'd be happy to, oh, it won't give me that option, sorry.
I guess eleven, five over thirteen, seven, but I don't know.
I agree, I agree with that, I don't think we have, it's gotta be eleven, five, cause that's the best point.
The main advantage of thirteen, seven is we have more things that can build on it. Um, and it unstacks, so I'm not sure it's clear, but yeah, five is a better point to fight for, but.
Yeah, but a six, four, any, a six, four or four, two, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, that would be a bad, there, there's some very awkward roles otherwise, I mean, obviously with having two checkers, two blots.
Well, he's not gonna double hit, well, he could, but I mean, you've got the um blot on, in their own home board, so.
Alright, the slide O's open. Alright, the three votes, oh, we got another vote. Alright, good, five votes are in, most of them are to go to the five point. Five point is better, coming down to the seven point does unstack, that is kind of important, alright, let's find out. Yeah, that unstacking is kind of a big deal.
Oh.
So XG likes this play here, I think like that.
Surprising to me, um. I remember these kinds of plays being wrong before, so maybe slight changes in the position will.
Well, yeah.
Probably the fact that white has a blot on their home board might be uh, swinging the scales towards this play, which is riskier.
It, it surprises me too, because if you roll a six, four, the best option, since you're not gonna be able to cover uh your five point anyways, is to put two checkers in the air if you made that play, so I, I, that's why I was leaning towards slotting the five.
Alright, six, one to play for the good guys, now we got a, we got a tough decision here.
Eight, two, six, five.
Okay, so I'm definitely on board with six, five. I'm probably on board with eight to two.
I don't see how it's a hard decision, it's the only play I see that's worth doing, I think.
Yeah. You're right, I think it is not a hard.
They've, they've got a blot on their twenty point, which would be nice to uh uh, get them off of that if, if we do get hit. Even if we don't.
Okay, so, I just wanted to look at it, um, but yeah, I think this is, this is definitely right, right?
We have more blot, uh, checkers back, they have a weakness on their board and we have stronger board, so three cri- criteria pointing to this one.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, not close. I guess I'm embarrassed, I hesitated even. Alright, red on roll. Okay, five to play out of this.
Boy, that's tough, come down or come out.
Yeah, I think that is.
Since the thirteen to eight doesn't really buy us anything, I think let's get out with the five while we can.
You convinced me. I, I like that too.
Okay, the slide O's open, you can vote. I, I want to make sure we stop by uh, ten minutes before the hour.
Well, technically it buys you unstacking the heavy thirteen point.
It does, yeah. Alright, but the votes are to step out. You know, uh, the red team has a big race lead at this point, right? Twenty-seven pips after, that's the main thing that red's got going for him. They got a big race lead. In other ways, red's position is not so good, stacked midpoint, slotted five point, no inner board points made. White has three checkers back, that's uh, that, but that's part of the, the race advantage. Alright, uh, yeah, most of the votes are for stepping out. So let's make that play and XG says, ooh.
Wow, surprising, I didn't expect that.
Cooper.
We're really screwing up.
And uh.
At least you didn't play eight to three.
I mean, uh, they have a well, we have a, um, like a, what is, what is called when it doesn't have a spare, it's a
Stripped.
The, the opposite, uh, stripped, yeah, this, we have a stripped eight, so it's less dangerous than usual because in order to attack the seven point block, we would have to break our eight with an ace, so yeah.
Okay, well, we're not gonna cube. Um, because we're still too far behind, uh, we have some threats, right? We'll hit with fives and sixes. Uh, but we still have three checkers back, um, I, I, I don't think this is a cube. Plus, we're ahead in the match, all, all these indications are pointing to, just, just sit on it for a little while. You guys agree, Eric and uh?
I agree.
Hmm, I think, yeah, I think we're a bit too weak to.
It, it could turn quickly though. You know, after we roll five, six like this. That's not five, six.
I mean, due to our race lead, if we safety our seven and cover the five, we, we will certainly have a cube, I think, but um not right now.
Okay, well, coming and hit, we got a two to play.
Sorry, I was thinking as, in terms of red, sorry, I'm like.
I like twenty-four, twenty-two.
Okay. That's worth considering, and what about this? That's more aggressive. Um, I'll point out that duplicates fours, right? They need fours to enter and fours to hit.
Yeah, that looks good.
Yeah, I do like that.
Richard, can we talk into this play?
You have.
Oh, great. Alright, and we'll get the cube up in the bullpen. Cause this might be cube territory if they pass. In fact, I'm not, I'm not gonna look at the play, cause that, it might affect it, so let's, let's roll, go back and look at this. The XG output, uh, later.
We have more checkers back, a stronger board, so we should be more.
Alright, so they danced, they, they rolled five, three and danced.
Can you check the?
No. No, I don't want to, because uh, the, the numbers can um influence your decision.
I will definitely cube this, yes.
So, ones, fours, sixes will hit. Along with double twos, double threes.
The, the race is even, we have better position and we have threaded, threats, so that's two out of three.
Our, our threats are pretty serious, uh, I mean, I, I mean numerous, we have twenty-nine hitting numbers. Uh, which will put a second checker on the bar. Is there any chance that this is too good?
Maybe there's a chance, yes, um. Cause with, with two on the bar, only if they roll doubles, we'll be, we will lose our market, I think. Which is a one in six chance. I feel like. Three specific doublets, so that's one in three cha, uh, sorry, one in eighteen chance, because we divide the chance, so, oh, fuck, no. One in uh, three in thirty-six, which is one in twelve, yeah, okay.
That sounds like a one map.
So we have a one in twelve chance of losing our market if they roll doublets with, with two on the bar, I think, so. Hmm. Now, something smells like double pass here to me, not too good.
Okay, yeah, I think I'd like to double this, Richard, what about you?
Dash and claim.
Nation claim, okay, let's cube. And we'll put this up to a vote.
Hey, at any other match score, I'm dropping while you're thinking about it. Um, well, but, but at, the only question is, is it worth the risk? Since we're down in the match, that's the only thing that would make it worth it.
Yeah, but we're, I mean, it's an eleven point match, we got lots of time to come back.
Okay, you convinced me.
I'd rather be, I'd rather be down four than uh, seven. I mean, there's a very good gammon chance in this for them. I think they're too good. So I think it'd be a huge blunt to take this.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, I agree with Adam, Jason, I think this was too good.
Could well be.
So I would drop, I vote to drop.
A slide. A hot potato.
We got nothing going on, we, we're, we're chimney stacked all over the place.
Chimney stacked, I'm, I'm stealing that.
I thought I got.
We've moved a grand total of two checkers, one of them backwards.
Exactly.
Alright, all the votes are for pass, so let's put that in here and then let's take a look, alright. First, the cube. Uh, double pass, it was not too good.
No.
And look at that, it's a very tiny pass. Almost a take.
That's a shock considering we're likely gonna, would have had two checkers on the bar with.
You guys, you guys are geniuses for being able to discern that difference. Well done.
I am impressed.
Yes.
It's gotta be the match score that makes it that close.
Oh, of course, I think if you reset this score to zero, zero, that's gonna be a pretty big pass. In fact, I, I, you just have to change it by one point, it's gonna, it'll okay, here was our uh, five, two. And Richard Batten had the right play, which is to split those back checkers, those two checkers in the back are, are languishing, but it was close.
Hey, Jason, before you start another game.
Yeah.
Did um, did you by the chance run that? I had a, a, a question about coming off the six point last week.
Oh, gosh, I don't, you know what, I don't even remember.
Okay, no worries.
I, I vaguely remember, but uh I, I'm probably gonna have to write this stuff down, uh, when it happens.
Yeah, it was, the question was about sliding off of this, like with double threes, sliding off the six.
Jason, go back to the cube decision, please. These um, situations where the take and pass are close to one always confuse me, because this looks to me like it's on the borderline of, of being too good and passing and not being on the borderline of taking and passing.
Alright, why don't we do this, instead of starting a new game, let's experiment with this, okay?
Uh huh.
Alright, so I'm going to
So. Oops. It's when both the take and pass equity are close to one, it's always confusing to me.
Alright, so I've reset the position uh, in it, and let's change the match score. And I think this is, this is what Rick was, was thinking about. Okay, so, um. What if it's zero, zero? Okay, so, uh, it should be a big pass now, right? Because if it was borderline take when it was three, nothing, now it should be a huge pass. Okay, well, maybe not a huge pass.
But a pass, none. Well.
Yeah, yeah, that's a.
Yeah, it's a pass.
Okay.
That's.
You know, you, you're all evaluating this correctly, that this is, this is not a good position for white. I'm sorry, for red, uh, so you want out, right? Okay, now.
Jason, do me a favor, can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Take the checker.
Jason, Jason intuitively, I would think if the score is zero, zero, it could be a take, there would be more reasons to take.
No, it's the other way around, you're, you're behind in the match here, so you're more likely to take when you're behind.
Hmm. Can, can you take the checker off your twenty-four point and put it on the midpoint, please? Get one of those back checkers out now, it's gotta be gigantic.
Okay, and then I put it back to the original match score, this is gonna be a huge, huge pass.
Yeah.
In fact, I don't think you even need to put it all the way out on the midpoint, okay, let me take.
Just get it out of the, yeah, just get it out.
Off there, what if I just put it there? It's a pass. Okay, so the two checkers on split matter a lot, alright, so that, that made a big difference. Okay, now let's go back, this is the original position and the original score, let's change the score again. Uh, let's make it the deficit more, so now it's four, nothing. Easy take.
Take now.
Okay, so things, things often happen like this, when you change it to a, a four point lead.
At four, nothing, put that checker back out, uh, on the mid. Okay. Unstack, unstack it off your, now at four, nothing, what's it say?
Um, I'll say this is a pass.
Yeah, I'm still saying it's a pass, I agree, uh, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, it's tough, right?
The only reason it's a take at four, zero, is because you have three checkers back and you've got a lot of work to do, is that basically it?
And two, and two were on the, on twenty-four point.
Right, two on the twenty-four point, that's where they started, right? So they, they, these, these checkers have done nothing to get started. And so it's gonna take you a long time to get them into the fray.
Even though, okay.
Yeah.
So the hot, so if it was five, nothing or six, nothing, it would definitely be a take as well.
Even more so, right? The, the more you make it lopsided, here, six, nothing, gonna, this is gonna be an easy take. It won't even be close, it might not even be a cube. Oh, nailed it, no double take at, at six, nothing. When you have these huge lopsided leads, you gotta, you gotta be careful, you don't wanna send over a cube. Um, the, the, this is premature because of these checkers back here. The score matters a lot, right? You, if you're if you're not paying attention to the score in a backgammon position. It's a big mistake, because there's just so much that the score has to do with uh, with your decision-making process.
Hmm.
How to make those decisions, that's difficult, right? But all I'm saying is, you definitely don't wanna ignore it completely, that's, that's the big mistake. And I think a lot of people do that, they're, they're not really thinking about the score and its implications. You know, I was playing a match the other day, it was four away, four away. And I sent over a very early cube, I had made my five point. Uh, but it was just way too early to ordinarily cube, but I sent it over. And my opponent put in the chat, they said, is, is this a score-based cube? And I didn't say anything until they took the cube and I said, yes. That turned out it was a take, but it was also an easy double because of the score. You know, getting to four away, four away means your gammons are gonna be juiced on a two cube. Also something that we should probably talk about. Okay.
Uh, I'm reading uh, Adjusting to Match Equity by Nick Blaser.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a good book, it's shock full of these things.
Alright, I'm gonna mute everyone and do a sign off. Alright, thank you for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, if you would like to join our study sessions or our tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticvg@gmail.com.